Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
The city of Barrie acknowledges the traditional territory of the Anishnaab people, which include the Odawa, Ojibwe, and Bodo Otomi nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Wendat nation Huron who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century. We are dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and recognizing the enduring presence of indigenous peoples on this land. We are committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. Welcome to the City Council meeting, our first in October. We're going to start with the confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the City Council meeting held on September 20th, 2023 have been circulated. Are there any corrections from members of council? I'm seeing none. They are printed, sorry, adopted as printed and circulated. Before we move to awards and recognition, with the consent from council, I would like to alter the order of business such that the presentation concerning youth ambassador and Global Perspectives programs is considered right after awards and recognition. Counselor Harris, so moved? Do we need a full vote on that, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, not at all.
Perfect. So we will proceed directly into the Global Perspectives following our awards and recognition ceremony. I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome delegation from Zweibrücken, Germany, and I'll now call upon Jeff Tool from the Global Perspectives program to approach the podium to say a few words about the international delegation visiting from the school Helmholtz Gymnasium, the city's twin city, Zweibrücken, Germany.
I'll try not to take too much of your time tonight, but I do appreciate the time that you've given us. And I appreciate the council for welcoming us and our German delegation tonight. I'm always happy to speak about our exchange program and the Global Perspectives program, both of which I'm extremely proud to be a part of. Global and our Germany exchange is run on the ground level by myself and three other teachers out of Innistale Secondary School. We host 28 German students in the fall each year and then travel to Germany for a month the following June. It really takes a village to run a program like this, and I wanted to acknowledge two of the biggest proponents of this exchange. Firstly, the program would not be what it is without the support of the city of Barrie, Mayor Alex Nudel, and the International Relations Committee members like Mark Satchew, Jim Harris, Bill Sargent, and the many more that sit at the IRC table. I thank you for your continued support of this important program. Secondly, I must acknowledge the Simcoe County District School Board Director John Dance, Assistant Director Dawn Stevens for her continued guidance and support, our last principal Brian McKaisak, and our new principal Julie Renison for helping make the program what it is today. A community and academic cultural exchange that benefits the lives of these students and the community at large. But really enough from me, let us hear from some more important people. We have several students who will speak from their experience from last year's program. In the audience, we have not only Global 23, but we also have Global 2024, who are taking part in the exchange currently. And after that, I'd ask Karina Welsh, the German teacher from Helmholtz Gymnasium, our sister city of Zweibrücken, to come up and also say a few words. Thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to call up our speakers from Global 2023. Thank you.
As Mr. Tool said, Global Perspectives is a highly intensive academic program that tests the academic limits of its students, leaving them with knowledge that they can bring with them for the rest of their lives. But the backbone of this program is the German exchange. Without the exchange, the program would not be the same, and students would miss out on the academic and interpersonal experience of a lifetime. The exchange to Germany is a two-part exchange that takes place in October and June of the school year. Last October, our class had the honor and pleasure of hosting our German exchange partners at our homes, an experience that was graciously reciprocated when we traveled to Germany this past June. Over the course of these two months, we made lifelong friendships and had the opportunity to expand and broaden our horizons while applying the knowledge we gained during our semester with the program. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that this exchange changed all of our lives for the better.
Applying for this amazing program was easily one of the best choices I've ever made. It was the most challenging, rewarding, and fun semester I've ever experienced, and I would recommend it in a heartbeat to anyone. One of the main reasons for this, of course, being the German exchange. This exchange was difficult at the beginning. Being forced into a relationship with a person from a whole different continent comes with challenges. But we adapted and overcame these barriers, discovering ourselves and our limitless ability along the way. I know that we all grew into wiser, stronger, more enriched people from the exchange and the relationships we forged with our partners. The skills our class gained from this exchange have better equipped us to take on the world beyond high school, and I'm forever grateful for that. These are all qualities that today's youth and future generations must have in order to help build a more educated, dynamic society. Global Perspectives and other exchange programs like it are an amazing way to positively impact people and in turn our community, and therefore should be made available to as many people possible.
One of the many benefits of a program like Global Perspectives is that education is not only in the classroom, but out in the world as well. The travel element of Global Perspectives allowed for what we learned in the classroom to be connected and applied to the real world. For example, we went from learning about politics in a classroom setting to watching a live session at the European Parliament in Strasbourg, Germany, an experience not many can say they have had. After doing a project on Martin Luther, we were also able to visit the Gutenberg Museum, home to many of the first books that were printed and variations of the printing press. One of the main goals of this program is to broaden the horizons of students as well as expand their knowledge and perspectives of the world, hence the name Global Perspectives. Being able to travel allows students to see a part of the world they may never have experienced before. I can say personally for myself, this program has solidified my future goals and allowed me the ability to develop and learn more than I ever would just in a classroom. I would not be the person I am today or the person I strive to be in the future without Global Perspectives.
Through the twin city exchange in Germany, students in this program were challenged and pushed outside of our comfort zone that we had grown so accustomed to. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that throughout our time in Germany, we had gained a new sense of independence and confidence. From a more personal perspective, I think a lot about the person that I was before Global. And truthfully, I was fearful of anything new. I liked staying safe and being as regular as possible. I almost didn't apply for this program, and if there was anything that I can say was the best decision that I have ever made, it was taking this program. I don't ever want to be that person who lived in fear of the unknown and had no confidence in her skills. I instead want to be the person that lived in, I want to be the person that traveled halfway across the world for a month, the person who navigated one of the largest cities in the world by herself, and the person who has never had a greater understanding of the world than she does now. Leaving for Germany, I felt like I was leaving behind the parts of myself that only ever felt safe in the small bubble I had created at home. I left my family for a month, but I gained a new family, a family that fills my heart by warmth just about thinking of them. I look back at everything I experienced throughout my time in Germany, and I genuinely couldn't imagine where my life would be without it. I feel like I gained a lifetime worth of experiences in just 30 days. This is an opportunity that should never be passed upon. Truthfully, I don't believe there is an experience as fulfilling as Global. I don't think there will ever be a program as fulfilling and life-changing. I wish that every student can experience this. It's an opportunity that I hope all students in Simcoe County can have for years to come. Thank you.
Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to call Karina Welsh up to the stage from Helmholtz Gymnasium to say a few words. Thank you.
Mayor Nudel, city councillors, city staff, Simcoe County District School Board Director Dance, citizens of Barrie. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the privilege of addressing you today. My name is Karina Welsh, and I am one of the two teachers from Helmholtz Gymnasium to accompany 28 students to Barrie at the moment. It is an honor to stand before you and share some thoughts on the Global Perspectives program with you tonight. As an educator and as a former exchange student myself, both in school and at university, I have had the privilege of witnessing firsthand the power of international students exchanges. These programs are like planting seeds in the hearts of young students and watching them grow into vibrant, beautiful flowers. So imagine, if you will, a vast and enchanting meadow brimming with an array of colorful flowers. Each one, unique and extraordinary, contributes to the overall beauty of the landscape. Just like a garden, our students flourish when they are exposed to new environments, cultures, and perspectives. They develop roots in the soil of mutual understanding and empathy, and they thrive under the care of their host families and teachers. The exchange program, as well as the support it has from the city of Barrie, is the sunlight and the rain that they need to grow into resilient and adaptable individuals. Before smiling about the present and about the future, allow me a short look back on the past few years in which we all faced the challenges of a global pandemic. This garden of our student exchange was subjected to an unexpected drought, and the extreme heat and our students, our educators, our communities, and indeed, our two nations faced adversity head-on. It was a period of unparalleled challenge, and it is within these trying times that the true value of our collective efforts become evident. Just as a meadow in a parched land requires a continuous supply of water to flourish, our students and educators required unwavering support and resources. The dedication shown by everyone involved to take care of the exchange was amazing. Thank you to all minds, souls, and hands for the efforts in both Team Canada and Team Germany to have endured this heat. As we move forward, let us continue to nurture this garden. Let us strengthen the bonds between our schools, Innistale Secondary School and Helmholtz Gymnasium, the friendship between our sister cities, the city of Barrie and the city of Zweibrücken, and our countries, Canada and Germany. Let us help students, present and future, to become the leaders, innovators, and peacemakers of tomorrow. I believe that our students' exchange program can serve as a beacon of hope and opportunity for our youth. It can be the bridge that connects them across the vast ocean that separates our countries. It can be the vehicle through which they continue to learn, grow, and appreciate the richness of diversity. The effort is undoubtedly more than worth it as we cultivate our future where our world is united by understanding and harmony, a world in which we can watch our students grow and bloom like the most magnificent flowers in a thriving garden. Thank you. Mayor Nudel, we would be happy if you accepted this gift as a representative of the city of Barrie. It is a symbol of friendship and gratitude on behalf of the city of Zweibrücken, our principal Karen Keem, and everybody involved in the program. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and Chair Harris, if you'd come with me as well, that'd be great. Thank you so much for the presentation and the gift, and to all of the students who are visiting here. I hope you're finding a very welcome city. You're having a lot of fun. You're also meeting lots of new people. And to those who are going to be traveling abroad in the, near the end of the year, I trust that you'll both enjoy the experience and represent the city of Barrie in an incredibly responsible way. It's an incredible program that was started by the school board, also a former councillor on this table, Mr. Morrison. And in the first year, I almost went in the program in Innistale, and I probably should have, hearing all of the great stories here tonight. So thank you again. We're now going to... I now ask Oliver to come down for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Nudel, staff, and council. So my name's Oliver Ward, and earlier this year, the city began organizing a youth ambassador exchange trip to Japan. This is a bi-annual trip which began over 25 years ago during Janice Lake King's tenure as mayor, and we've been honored to continue its legacy. I was privileged to participate in 2014 as a student, and now I'm a leader on the trip. And this year, we selected nine students from around Barrie to go, and I don't want to take time away from them, so now they're going to each say something to you.
In August this year, our group had an amazing trip to Maruyama, a city in the Yamagata Prefecture of Japan. Over the two weeks we visited, we were fortunate enough to see the beautiful countryside, mountains, temples, and shrines, explore the coastline, practice martial arts, and participate in the famous Tokinai Festival. We'd like to thank the city council and the international committee for their support in this program.
We began preparing for the exchange earlier this year, meeting at City Hall weekly as a group. Going into exchange, nearly all of us were strangers. Most of us had never traveled without our parents before, but we all shared the same excitement for taking such a big trip independently for the first time. On August 16th, we set off to put our preparations to the test. After more than 18 hours of traveling, we arrived in our partner's city of Maruyama. The trip brought many incredible experiences, but some of the most valuable were the connections we made, not only with each other, but with our host families. Living with strangers who speak a different language forced us to show our most outgoing sides and challenged us to find innovative ways to communicate despite the language barrier. Although it was only two weeks, leaving our host families was really difficult. I'm sure many of us are still messaging at them, and we are all excited to see them next summer when they come to Barrie.
Being in Japan showed us a culture completely different from Canada. We learned to appreciate their customs, from the friendliness of strangers to the hyperclownliness of pretty much every place we visited. It also made it possible for us to spend less time on our phones and more time appreciating real-world interactions and experiences. Some of us have even experienced better health since being in Canada. It showed us how to be independent and accountable for our own actions, since we couldn't rely on our parents for being right or wrong. I think it made many of us closer to our families by showing us how different living is without them.
It has only been a month since we've been back from the trip, but some of our accomplishments have included both personal achievements and involvement with the community. These can include beginning high school for the first time, becoming lifeguards of the city of Barrie, starting work at a retirement home, joining the student council and becoming vice president of the school DECA club, joining the Rotary Youth Leadership Award and Interact, and joining other exchanges including the Global Kids Exchange. Many of us have also reached out to international students and new immigrant students at our schools to become more involved with their experiences here.
We are looking forward to hosting next summer and sharing our cultures with our Japanese hosts. Thank you. I'd like to thank you once again on behalf of the 2023-2024 Barrie Youth Ambassadors delegation. Thank you so much for providing us this opportunity.
Now, members of council, we were actually a host family for that program when I was 14, and we had a young man named Konichiro stay with us. And it was, I didn't go to Japan, but it was so eye-opening just being even on the receiving end, and something that we never forgot. So I know the host families that are going to be receiving now are going to have a ton of fun and learn a lot along the way. I think I've forgotten any language I learned between then and now, though unfortunately. Well, I know that members of the public and our young people from another part of the world would love to stay through the evening and listen to us throughout the evening, but if you like, if you don't want to stay... Oh, there's one more. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor Nudel. If I could, just quickly, I wanted to recognize somebody very humbly standing in the background. It's our youth ambassadors lead, Shannon Scully Pratt. So thank you, take a bow, for all your efforts. Thank you. And there's other members, obviously, from the IRC, the International Relations Committee, here, and my co-chair, Mark Satchew, who's been involved since way back, has been a major contributor. So thank you, Mark, for being here.
So if you would like to, we will take a minute break. If you'd like to leave. If you'd like to stay and watch the meeting, we'd feel really good about ourselves. So up to you. We'll just take a minute break here. We're going to move on from the reports from officers, past deputations, as there's none. Deputy Mayor Thompson, I believe you have the motions.
Thank you, Mayor Nudel. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section A of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be received.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Thompson, and seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section A of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be received. 23-G-196, reported by the Affordability Committee, dated September 13th, 2023, as well as 23-G-197, the report of the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee, dated September 20th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments with regards to these two committee reports? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section B of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section B of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. The report of the Heritage Barrie Committee dated June 27th, 2023. 23-G-199, Municipal Heritage Registry 96, Claperton Street. 23-G-200, 2024 Doors Open Event Marketing Communication. 23-G-201, motion 23-G-180, referred by General Committee on August 16th, 2023, regarding Landfill Bike Diversion Pilot Program. 23-G-202, the Somerset Drive and Wright Drive, no parking and stopping, prohibited, Ward 6. 23-G-203, no parking anytime, Mapleton Avenue. 23-G-204, municipal names, registry, additional names. And 23-G-205, the business plan status as of June 30th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments with regards to Section B of the General Committee report? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section C of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section C of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 23-G-206, Sea Cadets Facility Relocation Options and Youth Support Consultation. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? I'm seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section D of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section D of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 23-G-207, deferred by motion 23-G-152 by the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee on May 31st, 2023, Waterfront Strategic Plan Update. Are there any questions or comments from members of council regarding this? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section E of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section E of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 23-G-208, Parking Control for New Subdivision Secondary Plan and Built Boundary, Ward 7, 8, 9, and 10. Are there any questions or comments with regards to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. Deputy Mayor?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section F of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that Section F of the General Committee report dated September 27th, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. This is 23-G-209, the This is 23-G-209, the municipal street naming for streets in Ballymore, draft plan of subdivision, 750 Lockhart Road, Ward 10. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion?
Hold, please.
Pardon?
Sorry. Hold, please, or just, I guess I'll, I have an amendment.
You have an amendment? Perfect.
I'd like to table an amendment, so I'll table the motion as presented. And my amendment is as follows, that motion 23G209, Section F of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, be amended by, A, deleting Paragraph 3 in its entirety. And I'll leave it there and see how it goes. I'm, sorry. I don't have it in paper, that's why I emailed. I don't have the paperwork. Oh, even if I do, I don't have the, that was circulated. Oh, you've got it, right. That's okay, we'll go. We'll go. Yeah, thank you. Second part in Paragraph 5, adding after the word "duty," members of public servant, public service, civil servant, with the remainder of the paragraph remaining the same. And the third amendment to the motion as presented is C, adding the following paragraph, that the street naming policy be amended to delegate the selection of names for new streets from the street name registry to the Director of Development Services or their designate in consultation with the ward counselor. And that is moved by myself and seconded by Bryn Hamilton. Counselor Hamilton? That's okay.
Point of clarity, can we get a copy of that motion? Because it started off with just removing Paragraph 3, and now it sounds like there's been some added stuff. Okay, perfect.
So members of council should have that circulated at 7:16 PM this evening?
It's moved by Counselor Kungal and seconded, sorry, Counselor Kungal, you haven't signed this. Perfect. It's moved by Counselor Kungal and seconded by Counselor Hamilton, the motion 23-G-209 of Section F of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, be amended as follows. One, by deleting Paragraph 3 in its entirety. Two, in Paragraph 5, by adding the word "duty," quotation, members of the public servant. Yeah, this needs to be corrected and initial, please, that's okay. Thank you, I'm just going to start again, the motion 23-G-209 of Section F of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, be amended as follows, by deleting Paragraph 3 in its entirety, and Paragraph 5 by adding the word, after the word "duty," quotation, members of the public service, pub, uh... Yeah, civil servants, with the remainder, I'm sorry, this guy says, but the grammar's not right here. So members of the public service, civil servants? Or civil service? Yeah, so I think it's gonna... Civil servants. Okay, perfect. I'll pass this back for you to initial after this, if that's okay. With remainder of the paragraph remaining the same, and three, by adding the following paragraph, that the street naming policy be amended to delegate the selection of names for new streets from the street name registry to the Director of Development Services or their designate in consultation with the ward counselor. Counselor Kungal, would you like the floor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nettle. So putting some options on the floor for those that may feel differently about certain aspects of the motion. In particular, for instance, this basically identifies that by deleting Paragraph 3, we're not supporting the movement towards individuals, this term of council and onwards, being identified as consideration for potential street names, sorry, Counselor Thompson. And the other amendment to Paragraph 5 was focusing in on opening up the inclusion of other public members of service, to also continue to respect the current process, which is that individuals still would not be added to the by-name list until they are deceased. And I can look to Counselor Hamilton if she would want to add to that around some of the changes recommended in Section B and C.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Counselor Hamilton, then Counselor Morales, and Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Sure, and through you, Mayor Nettle, I'll just elaborate on the adding the following paragraph to number C there. I think we spent a lot of time on this naming registry with the General Committee, and again tonight, in my opinion, this is just being put forward as an efficiency thing. I don't think there's any value add in having names of streets come forward to General Committee and to council, just to make things more efficient. I think we can empower staff, and I think we can empower the ward counselor to have these conversations and not make them come forward for voting at this table. So there you have it.
Counselor Morales?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I'm supportive of the section about empowering the local ward counselor and staff, because that's already in place. So in the municipal naming policy that we have, Mayor Nettle, on page six, on street naming, it specifically says explicitly, it's a combination of the developer, the staff, and the local ward counselor. So that's already there. So that's, I'll speak to that one. As for the other sections, I won't be supporting it, and here's why. If the intent is simplicity and appropriateness, that's already achieved in the, in the, in the motion that was passed last week. Appropriateness, fit, reflectiveness, which includes adversity essentially of our community, staff already have that, there's a section there. As for the names, I support Deputy Mayor Thompson with what he said about, it becomes objective, where do we draw the line? And this is a clean way to do it. And here's why. Including a generic point about civil servants, public servants becomes arbitrary. At any point in given time in this municipality, I believe there's 900, 1,000 employees, so where's the line? I don't see the criteria. Is it 10-year service? Is it five-year? What if they leave and then come back? We've had employees leave and come back to municipality. Is it consistent time? So just the very fact of the trouble we had getting the amendment on the floor and the clarity, I think for the, in the spirit of having clear language, I'll be supporting the original amendment for that reason. And this is very important for me to note. I just completed the application, as I said last week I would, on the Fallen Officer and Ward Night. The application is ready to go. I will be bringing it to City Hall tomorrow, which is why I know about the naming, municipal naming policy. And any member of the public can bring forward a former civil servant, a current civil servant, a former politician, and do their application. Took me about seven minutes to do the application. So if people believe that there's an important person, feel free to do an application, as is the current process. By doing it with this generic language, we are putting the unnecessary on us on staff to determine where the line is on deciding who gets a street out of 1,000 employees at any given time, and out of counselors going back to potentially the 1,800s. So if you've done your research and you have a historical appreciation of a recent or far away politician, I'm happy to share that policy with you. And again, it's a seven-minute application. So I'll be voting no to this.
Thank you, Counselor Morales. Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Maybe to the mover of the motion, and Counselor Morales touched on, what would the criteria be? And this is to continue on naming of anything after the deceased?
So the intent of the motion overall, the first one is omitting the amendment, so basically not supporting the movement of members of councils' names as per this term onward being considered. The rest of that motion is softening, I think, Paragraph 5. So it removes the developer from the process. It leaves it to the Director of Development Services, their designate in consultation with the ward counselor, so it is a change of process. And it does allow for room for individuals to be recognized if their names are put forward as members of council or any other public servant. So you're still continuing with the current policy as it is today, if you were to still want to continue with the merits of the current process, which is considering members of council and/or members of past staff after they've been deceased.
Maybe just a little bit of clarity. So are you looking to have the naming only after the person's deceased? Or it can be either or?
I'll look to Counselor Hamilton if she wants to clarify her intention, because she held the pen more so on 5, but I am putting it forward as after an individual is deceased.
Yes, so I did check with Madame Clerk prior, and the provision in the policy related to streets being named after a person is deceased still stands. So this is just an inclusion to that Paragraph 5, to add the public servants and civil servants, but that provision still stands.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, just to Ms. Banfield, are we able to remove the development of a subdivision in the naming, as it would be their property and stuff? I know it becomes a municipal road, but is that something that we can do, is remove the developer from the process?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to the deputy mayor, I'm not really sure whether it's an issue of whether we can or can't. Ultimately, they become public streets, and so the city can name, ultimately, they're our assets. So, so I don't think that there's an issue not involving the developer, because they do become municipal assets. That being said, the, the public street name registry is public, and we certainly work with the development community to choose the names that, that work best. But I don't think, as I said, at the end of the day, they become city assets.
My final question, I think, maybe to the mover, through you, Mayor Nettle, what would the criteria be? And that's, and I know that we've got hung up that we start now, and some people may look at it as it's self-serving, but like, what would the guideline be for somebody in the past? Or like, do you have a term limit? Or what, what are the intentions of broadening the opportunity for people to be named? Like, would it be, to Counselor Morales's point, an application? Or, and then to staff? Or the ward counselor bringing it forward with the delegated authority, as Counselor Hamilton is saying, to kind of mainstream it? What would the intentions be? And how would we bring somebody's name forward?
I think it's still respecting current process. It's just a courtesy to include reference to areas of interest, which were members of council and other civil servants, into the amendment from last week that talked about veterans and others that have served. So it's more of a courtesy nod to that, but it doesn't change the current process, other than the aspect of C that's on the floor for an amendment around changing the process, where it's the, sorry, I've got it by email, I'm looking at, so three, yep. So Development Services Director and Designate in consultation with the ward counselor.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Maybe to the movers, you know, just curious why you think it's important to include it being deceased? It just feels like always better to honor someone when they're with us than when they're not. I just kind of wondered about that as a, as a, you know, style of doing it.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, happy to answer the question, Counselor Harris. I think I spoke to it a little bit last week. I think from a reputational risk, I understand the merits of the current process, which is to recognize someone only after they've been deceased. So that is current practice. That's been informed, and I believe staff spoke to that last week about other issues in municipalities, and some learnings taken from that. So that is, that is current practice. I do believe that that has merit. So we can't control how someone behaves in life, whether they are current term or post-term, or whether or not we see that as being someone that exhibits the elements of, you know, I think the process of putting a name forward in recognition. I like the process that individuals are nominated, there's a little bit of justification for why that comes forward in the current process. But I, I don't, I actually don't support kind of gifting a recognition for someone that may not stand the test of time. And being in a situation where we become judge and jury about whether or not we should be removing someone's name from a street sign.
Okay, that's fair, thank you. Just so, would that hold true for other things? Like, we really shouldn't name things after people who are still living? Is that where you would see that line being drawn for all things, being named after?
Yeah, this is just specific to the scope of the motion tonight and current process that's looking to be changed.
No, yeah, just thinking, if, like, what would make a street sign that much more risk than, say, a park or a beach? Or would, would it apply globally?
I can't speak to that, because I don't know the current policy of how parks are named or otherwise, so I'm just speaking to the process now for street naming.
Sorry, just to jump in here before we go to other members of council. I do have notes today that said that there was going to be a garden brought forward naming somebody who's alive. So that's a thing. And I wasn't, I wasn't gonna, I was gonna wait till the end to say that. Counsel Harris, you kind of brought it out. So just want to clarify for members of council, if you're looking at creating a set of principles and governing documents for namings, I would question to everybody, so I can put this in the form of question, do we, do we want as a team to have a set of regulations that go across the board? And I think that's something to be chewed on. I'm, this has taken way too long, but something to be chewed on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, yeah, I just, and I didn't know that, so thank you. It just seems like I was just kind of getting a sense of, would we be applying the same rules or principles to all naming? Or is what would make street signs exceptionally exclusive to that criteria? So I'll leave it there. I guess my mother, one other question before I have a comment, maybe of, through you, Mayor Nettle, to Ms. Banfield, is the current process for naming streets, by and large, working for staff?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris, there, by and large, yes, it's, it's working. We bring names forward, they get on the list, people look at the list, they pick it off the list, and usually, by and large, yes. In some cases, they do go off in a different direction, but generally speaking, yes, it's, it is okay.
Okay, so safe to say it's not a problem you're looking to have fixed? I don't know if I put words in your mouth, but sorry.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris, the policy is five or six years old, so I mean, there is always the opportunity to look at policies that have a tiny bit of date behind them, so we certainly would be happy to do that.
Great, thank you. And maybe just, I mean, a couple of comments. I, you know, I, I know Deputy Mayor Thompson really well, and I, I know he didn't do this to have a street named after himself, that's, that's not what he was doing. But I, I do respect that he has respect for these council members and those who will follow in understanding what it takes to do this job. But I think the way I read it, and maybe I didn't think about it as hard as others, but what I saw was an effort to make us eligible, not to deem us worthy. So I think it's a real key distinction. So we are on the list, somebody someday might decide that one of us is worthy. And for that, I'm okay to live with. If I'm never worthy, there's lots of Jim Harrises, so it would have covered a lot of people. But you know what? So I really, I, I think, and I don't want to go down the road of, so what makes a street sign so important that you can't put a counselor on it? But you can put one on a park, a, a bridge, all these other great opportunities to recognize people who we think, not their opinion, we think they're worthy. So I offer that. And I had all of one resident who commented about this to me, and, you know, worried about my ego being big enough already to have, I actually want my street named after myself. And I was like, well, it was my idea, and I'm not against it. But so someday, someone may adjudicate my worthiness, and I'm okay with that if I'm eligible. So that's really how I see it. And I know it's created some discussion, good discussion, but I really wouldn't want to see us do this, and then go, wow, other things are okay. So that's where I land on it. So thank you for those who've made the amendment. I won't support the full amendment, but I do like the, the bottom section of it, the Section C of it, so thank you.
Sorry, just to confirm, it's Section 3, it's separate, it's different on email than the motion, so it's Section 3. Counselor Hamilton, you've already Councillor Hamilton, you've already spoken to this motion. Is there a question or do you have a comment? Because if you have a comment, you can't make it, but if you have a question, you can. Any other, councillor Nixon and then councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall, to Ms Banfield. Just a quick question on the process, the current process. You know, we've, we've seen a lot in the last week about certain groups, whether, you know, whether it's councillors, civil servants, you know, veterans, you know, those killed in action. But I'm trying to determine where the general public falls into that selection process. And it's my understanding that anyone at any time can recommend that any member of the public could be at least eligible. Is that, is that correct or does this take them out of the equation?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Nixon, there is on our website an application form for anybody at any time to nominate someone. Then that gets vetted through a naming committee of staff and then it gets vetted through EMS and all those sorts of things. And then that's when it gets kind of presented back to council. So you're right, there are some names that come forward that for all sorts of different reasons, they may be very, very worthy, but there may be a street, for example, in Innisville that's named the same or too close or, so there's lots of people that, that may be worthy, but regardless, for all sorts of different reasons, they, they can't have a street named after them in the city of Barry.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Harvey, and are there any other questions, comments afterwards? Yep, go ahead, councillor Harvey.
Great, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. And I am very comfortable talking about this because I know there won't be a second Harvey Road ever coming to town. And I'm very happy that I've learned that Harvey Road is actually named after Judge Harvey that used to live at the corner of Harvey and Essa Road, apparently. But a question to staff, just because of this deceased piece that's come up. When it comes to parks, because obviously I've been involved in a naming involving a park, and I'll be quite honest with you, I wish it would have happened sooner so that way Will Dwyer would have seen what, what we did to recognize his legacy. So is there any other written hard policy when it comes to parks or is it solely when it comes to street naming? Or do you even, you might not even know the answer off the fly because I, I know I'm getting into some technicalities here.
Mayor Nuttall, through you, to councillor Harvey. The municipal naming policy applies to assets and infrastructure, so that's streets, parks, et cetera. The, there are different rules with respect in the policy, with provisions within the policy with respect to how streets are named in a new subdivision and that may or may not be amended this evening. And then there are opportunities related to parks as well. The requirement for a person to be deceased in the policy applies only to those who are members of council and civil servants. It does not apply to the general public. And of course, as with any policy of council and explicitly in this policy, council may also choose to override the policy.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure that down the road, like I know obviously there's a few people around the table that seem to be pretty dead set about this deceased piece, but I think it's something that we still hopefully have the door open to be able to override down the road if, if we see fit because there are certain people that I think have left, left quite a legacy in this city that I would hate to see don't get recognized appropriately until they pass away.
Thank you, councillor Harvey, councillor Kangal.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Nuttall, the question is to the clerk about separating out a motion on one and then two and three as it relates to paragraph five. Is that process possible?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Kangal. If that's what you choose to do, I would probably suggest withdrawing the motion that you have on the floor and then reintroducing the one to separate paragraph three, like just put in a separate amendment for deleting paragraph three and have that voted on. And then you can do a separate, put a separate motion to add, if that one passes, then we could put a separate motion out after that to, to amend paragraph five to add the public civil servant section and then as well as the portion related to the street naming.
Okay, so I'll leave it as is.
Are there any other comments or questions? Question?
I made it a question, thank you. And through you, my question is, is this our priority? Is this aligned with our strategic goals? So we have spent 20 minutes last week, we spent 20 minutes, 30 minutes this week. Number three, number C in your emails, the delegation, to me, that's an efficiency thing, that's aligned with what we're trying to do at City Hall and with staff. So to me, I absolutely support that. The rest of this, I think we need to wrap this up. I'm happy to separate out number three if that's where we need to go, but I just, again, would question, we're spending so much time on this and I'm not sure where this fits in with our strategic directions or our priorities this evening.
Any other questions or comments?
Call the vote.
I'm going to ignore you for a second, say something if that's okay, councillor Harvey. With all due respect, councillors, this was put on the floor, so if we're debating it, that's because it was put on the floor, okay? So we don't get to put something on the floor and then complain it's being talked about. That doesn't, that's not how it works, this is democracy. Number two, I have a real, real issue with number three. And my issue with number three is this. Ms Banfield, if I come to you and I'm the Ward 10 councillor, and I'm only saying Ward 10 because I was the Ward 10 councillor, but, and I go to you and say, there's a development coming forward and you have the direction that says that the director of Development Services or their designate in consultation with the ward councillor determine the name. Are you going to listen to the ward councillor or are you going to go your own way? You don't have to answer that. Folks, putting a member of staff like I just did on the spot as a board of director is not the right route to deal with this. If you want to designate the decision-making on street names to the ward councillor, designate the ward councillor. If you want to designate staff, designate staff. I'll remind you, ward councillors have the choice, actually all of us have the choice on the street names of the city of Barry. To my great annoyance, councillor Morales has brought it forward about 23 times this, I'm kidding, this term of council.
No, I read 23 names last week. You stopped me from reading the names.
So we have the opportunity to change names. I don't want a system where the director is quote unquote consulting with ward councillors for influence. I want a system where either we designate you as the ward councillors, I'm not even part of this, so designate you as the ward councillors to bring it forth and then it'll be brought forward by the public service or the public service bring it forth and then we have the opportunity to determine going on from there. So I can't support number three, being paragraph number three, the way, the way that it's being positioned. And I, I would ask others around the table to not support it because I think it's setting up a really tough situation for our, for our staff. And I can imagine if I was a director, I'd probably be designating somebody every time so I didn't have to be in that situation. I will call the vote because councillor Harvey asked me to. All those in favor of the amendment? It fails? Are there any other amendments on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor.
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded votes being caressed, being requested by councillor Kangal.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I'm going to start with councillor Hamilton.
No.
Councillor Morales?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
Yes.
Councillor Harvey?
Yes.
Councillor Nagusi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councillor Corser?
No.
Councillor Kangal?
No.
Councillor Nixon?
Yes.
Councillor Reema?
Yes.
And Mayor Nuttall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I still have to give you this, even though it lost, correct? Beautiful. I almost put it in the garbage, good hand clerk. Would have been in trouble. By garbage, I meant recycling. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hamilton, that section G of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by deputy mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Hamilton, the section G of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. 23-G-210 Grove and Duckworth Streets Separating, Separated Cycling Facility Implementation, wards one and two. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor in section G? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hamilton, that's section H of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
Thank you, deputy mayor Thompson. It's moved by deputy mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Hamilton, the section H of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be adopted. 23-G-211 Geddes Crescent, no parking, anytime restrictions, ward four. 23-G-212 Community Infrastructure and Housing Accelerated, CHA, order for Schlegel Villages, 800 Young Street, ward nine. I found those German words hard tonight. 23-G-213, referred by motion 23-G-213, correspondence from the municipality of Great Highlands concerning school bus arm cameras. Are there any questions or comments with regards to those motions? All those in favor, carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hamilton, that's section I of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be received.
Thank you, deputy mayor Thompson. It is moved by deputy mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Hamilton, the section I of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be received. 23-G-214 Confidential Proposed Disposition of Land, Bayview Drive, ward eight. Are there any questions or comments with regards to this motion? I have one question, Madame Clerk or Mr CAO, perhaps this is the best place to go with this. After this is either approved, if it is approved, how long before it is made public? Because I think there's been details of what we discussed confidentially in the public forum.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to members of, of council, I think it would be helpful if it's council's wish to, to provide that information to the public, they should give us that direction. Otherwise, confidential matters of council remain confidential until such time as council releases it.
Mr Prouse, with regards to items that were in the media then, which potentially identified what could be a position, without putting an amendment to this, could you please speak to whoever's on the other side of this and confirm that they did not provide it to the media?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to you, Mayor Nuttall. If I'm reading between, and I apologize, I've been in virtual back-to-back meetings all day long, so if the media's been reporting some of this, I'm, I'm not aware of it. But if I'm reading between the lines correctly, I will certainly ensure that the other party is, is abiding by council's direction. I believe as of late this afternoon, I did receive an email confirming that was also their position.
Perfect, thank you. I will call the vote, all those in favor, carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hamilton, that's section J of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by deputy mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Hamilton, the section J of the General Committee Report dated September 27, 2023, as circulated, be adopted, lease of portion of 555 Bayview Drive, the YMCA of Simcoe Meskoka, ward eight. Are there any questions or comments with regards to this exact motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it carries. We'll now move on to direct motions. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Nixon, authorize the release, the address, legal description identified in motion 2020, sorry, 23G179. That the mayor and chief executive administrative officer be authorized to release the address, legal description of the properties identified by city council through motion 23G179 as deemed appropriate.
This is a direct motion on the floor, moved by deputy mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Nixon, authorization to release addresses, legal description identified in motion 23G179, that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to release the address, legal descriptions of the properties identified by city council through motion 23-G-179 as deemed appropriate. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion? Councillor Kangal.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall. Without speaking to the details, I would expect that because we're talking about identifying properties, that should those properties have any relationships to anybody else, there would be first a communication to those parties.
Yeah, I think that that's an appropriate way to move forward, for sure. Any other questions? Sorry, and I should have said this before, before you spoke, I apologize. Remember, this is confidential, so if you're going to ask a question, do as councillor Kangal did in terms of, don't go into any detail. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, and it carries. I don't believe there are any other direct motions, so we will move on to presentations of which there is. We have one more presentation. This presentation is 14.2. It's from the Art and Water Group, Concerning Art and Water Perfect Pair. And now call upon Matt Slaman, Executive Director of the Art and Water Group, to provide the presentation. Over to you.
Hi, Barry City Council. Are you getting me loud and clear? I'm just coming in from Zoom.
We can hear you.
Amazing. Thank you so much for having me and for the opportunity to present our program that we currently run across three cities in Ontario and have our eyes set on Barry to expand. Here we go. So Art and Water is a registered charitable organization that presents a combination of children's theatre, dark side performances, a Meskoka Chair mural art gallery, as you can see with our tiny photo of two beautifully painted Meskoka chairs, and then some ancillary boat tour programs. We've been operating since 2009 in Ottawa, 2014 in Toronto, and this year we opened a Hamilton location and we're looking at Barry for next year. Our structure, there's a board of directors behind us as a charitable organization, the creative producer or a executive director myself, and then onsite teams at each location, which include administrative staff, event staff, a plethora of artists, almost 90% of our workers and our employment offering goes directly to local artists, usually students of acting programs. Our flagship program and the key component we're looking to bring to Barry is this children's theatre. It happens aboard a pirate ship where families with kids under the age of 10 join our crew and search for sunken treasure. Imagine pirates of the Caribbean come to life in front of you. It's an opportunity for families with young kids to have a first engagement with arts, sometimes a first experience on a boat, and more than anything, a lasting memory which helps those families and the young childrens become lifelong patrons of the arts. We've conducted some surveys over the years of our audiences and seven out of 10 times, it's the family's first experience at an arts and cultural event. Two of those other 10 times where they did attend events, we're seeing something like Barney on stage, for example. This children's theatre, it occurs from May to October. This children's theatre, it occurs from May to October aboard a modified or recreated pontoon boat that we've dressed up to look like a pirate ship. It is a program that supports local artists by bringing them to work with us. It's presented to families for birthday parties, for summer camps, and the additional programming we do run with this vessel is using it as a space to host other performances. If you can look in the picture, you might make out that there is, there are a couple of musicians on board. We work with local artist organizations to present other programs, providing them a new venue. Imagine an R&B concert out on the water. Imagine having a folk band come and perform, or maybe even Theatre by the Bay, creating an immersive piece of theatre aboard the ship. These are some of the additional programs that we look to develop in partnership with local arts organizations. Another program that we've run in the past is a dockside performance. We again hire musicians or dancers to perform public free events on waterfronts. Primarily, this has occurred in Toronto through funding from the Toronto Waterfront Business Improvement in area. It occurred in Ottawa during 2020 and 2021 through funding from Experience Ontario, and we continue to apply for funding programs to be able to bring a public performance to the water. We call these stumble upon performances. You're out for a stroll in the evening or the afternoon on a weekend, and you stumble upon a public performance entirely free, open invitation for you to stay for as short or as long as you like. I'll spare you the video. You can always jump into the slide deck, which I think has been passed around, to take a gander. I'll spare that video as well. Another one of our programs is the Muskoka Chair mural. We took the iconic Muskoka chair, as we've seen all over cottage country, and we hired local artists to create a mural. These murals brought these seats to life, creating both public seating and public artwork at the same time. This is another one of the programs that we'd like to bring as a part of our wishes to come to Barry, our children's theatre, our dockside performances, and our Muskoka Chair murals. These are great projects. It supports local artists. We work directly with them. We source the chairs from here in Ontario, build them on location, and work with our artists to have them primed, painted, and presented to the public. There's a call to artists that goes out in the springs, where different artists submit their submissions. A panel that we put together reviews the submissions, and then selects the artists whom are, of course, paid a living wage for their work with us. A few additional programs we're considering to bring to the city of Barry as a part of an overall waterfront activation could include projects such as this Palapa Boat Tour, a tiki-themed boat tour experience, as well as a hot tub boat program which exists in Victoria, BC. We're presenting to you several ideas that we have not yet embarked in ourselves, the tiki and the hot tub, as just ancillary programs that we could bring over time to the city of Barry. Today, our presentation is primarily regarding the children's theatre and pirate ship program. We're also exploring other partners in the existing cities we operate, specifically in Toronto, to bring a dockside sauna and cold plunge program. All of this is just sort of to present ourselves as an organization with a bit of a big vision. Art and Water has been funded in the past by Feddev, the Government of Canada. We've been supported by Canada Cultural Spaces programs, the Province of Ontario, and the Toronto Arts Council. We are a living wage employer, providing a living wage to anyone who works with us or is subcontracted out through our organization. Today, our request to council is to consider the possibility of bringing in this children's theatre program right to downtown Barry to activate and animate the waterfront in a new way. Our children's show will provide a new and novel way for folks visiting Barry, locals in Barry, to experience the waterfront. It provides a great, unique, and novel experience for families with young children, a first exposure at the arts, and maybe a first exposure on the water as well. It's something that we've run successfully in Toronto, Ottawa, now Hamilton, for a number of years, and we really see Barry as a beautiful potential, a gateway to the north, and what an amazing waterway to bring our program to up on Lake Simcoe. So, I'll bring the slideshow back to the boat, just so you can have a quick vision of what it looks like. And thank you, everyone, for your time, and of course, open the floor to any questions you might want to learn a bit more about Art and Water and the programs that we present.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for the presentation, the information, and for taking an interest here in the beautiful city of Barry. While Hamilton, Toronto, and Ottawa are beautiful cities, I've got to say this potentially would be a step up for you. Councillor Nixon.
I concur. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Nettle. And hello, Matt. Nice to see you again. I just want to mention that Matt and I and a couple of staff members, including Stephanie Schlichter, I had a couple of conversations and a tour of the Marina area. And yeah, it's a very exciting program that you guys are putting together. I noticed on the last slide there, the one thing that always jumps out to many of us here on council is the request for support. And the only thing that I saw on that list was, you know, suitable mooring space, which I believe there is, there's only a couple of potential spots. There's one that jumps right out that would be perfect for it. So really, I guess your only ask is, you know, that your organization and the city come to terms on rental for that spot. From my understanding, you have your own sources of funding. Is there anything else that we should be aware of?
Thanks, councillor Nixon. It's great to see you again, of course, digitally, unfortunately, in this circumstance. You're right, the only request for support is assistance with engaging with the city of Barry through either a lease or a license arrangement to access the dock wall. We did review a space, it's where the old Mariposa Bell, the former cruise ship, I think it was called the Mariposa Bell, just across from Meridian Place. We have a vessel, it's already nearing completion for construction, and we're looking for a home for it. We would, of course, require some access on the ground level, on the city side or the land side, to have a staging area, a place where we can invite our audience to get face paint tattoos and pirate names and interact with our artists before they actually board the vessel. That space would ideally have power access to us, and we'd bring in a temporary structure, a trailer of some sorts to act, a tiny home on a trailer to be our ticket booth, basically, leaving limited impact. But that is, that is it. We just seek assistance from the city to provide us with some lease so we can begin our programming. And you're right, Mayor Nettle, I do think Barry would definitely be a step up. The waterfront is incredibly green. Touring it just brought visions to my eyes of how we might try to cross Lake Simcoe, except for when there are strong winds, because I hear it gets pretty bad out there.
Thank you. And at this point, you know, this whole presentation was just more for information purposes for council, just to have a little sneak preview of what we've been looking at. I think all will agree that it's, you know, it's a pretty cool idea and that I think you'll do very well with support from the community. It sounds like a lot of fun. I'm just going to, perhaps through Ms. Schlichter, just to confirm what, how we are coming along in the process. Is there, is there talks continuing, or at this point, is it, I'm just wondering what the next next step might be in making this happen?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Nettle, to councillor Nixon. The mooring itself, or any of our city facilities, would be through the Marina, and so I do not want to speak on their behalf. More discussions would need to come. Clearly, there's connections across several elements of the city's portfolios. So, that would be something I'd have to get back. I don't want to comment on their behalf.
Fair enough. Okay, well, that's great. That's all I had. Thank you very much again.
Thank you councillor Nixon. I believe the next question I had was councillor Corser, and councillor Kangal, and deputy mayor Thompson.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to our guest. I will never, ever, ever give up an opportunity to talk boats as a hardcore sailor. I'm just wondering, the vessel itself, you were looking at it to be the location, which I don't want to get into the weeds about this. Was by the shipwreck, the JC Morgan, is that where you were thinking of the location that you were eyeing up?
I think I would need, I think, support from Amy Tavest to answer that question. I'm not familiar with the shipwreck, but it is located near, I think it's the the Navy school, the little Navy building that's there. It's not Navy, it's the Cadets Building.
It's the Sea Cadets, yes.
Okay, that's clarifying for me, because it's not the wreck that I was, I'm familiar with. And your vessel is a pontoon vessel, so it doesn't have extensive draft, is that correct?
Yeah, so if you're, if you're familiar with boats, you might remember the old Three Boys House boats that came across the country in 1985 on train from BC. We've taken the superstructure and demolished it and rewelded a superfist, which is the frame and wooded clad pirate ship recreation that you saw. So it is a pontoon vessel with outboard gasoline engines. It carries up to 40 persons, and the draft is about three feet.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to get an idea of where you're discussing space of where that would be feasible. Thank you very much.
Councillor Kangal.
Thank you through you, Mayor Nettle, and Matt. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to ask a question about economic opportunities for our local artists and theatre performers. So when you reference your artists, are you coming with your own staff for the boat? That's kind of, you know, familiar with the structure and the performances, or are there opportunities for local artists and theatre performers to potentially be involved in this in some way?
Yeah, that's a great, a great question, and thank you for the ask. It is an important one. We're looking probably at a 99% local engagement. We would, of course, in initial operations, bring team members who've always, who've already worked with us in the past and are familiar with it to start and train. The idea is that by July 1st, we're at a position where the entire staff is local, with the possibility of a manager coming in and out and bopping in and around as a regional support. But we do look to hire entirely local staff. And that staff component is usually about 20 persons.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt. And then my second question is, while you don't need funding at this time in reference to, I think it was Explorer Ontario, and then the Toronto Waterfront, are you seeing that over time that this will need to be subsidized in some way? Or do you have sustainable funding based on how you are billing for the entertainment aspect?
That is a good question. So primarily, our children's theatre in itself is self-sufficient. That is able to operate under its own budget through ticketing revenue. The ancillary programs like the dockside performances or the Muskoka Chair murals, those are usually externally funded. We have requested funding in the past through various levels of government in order to bring those programs to life. We did, you did see a couple of other slides regarding other boat possibilities, one being the tiki tour themed boat, and the other being the hot tub boat. Those are, let's call them more commercial products, and we're considering those as a part of our offering such that we're able to be sustainable without having to ask outside funding. If we run something that's generally commercial, we use the surplus from that to bring back to our arts organization, and then we can fund the dockside performances and the Muskoka Chair murals entirely in-house, because of course reliance on grant is not, not a sustainable practice.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kangal, and deputy mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Be real quick, councillor Kangal actually asked one of my questions. Barry's got a very vibrant public art committee and stuff, so I was wondering if the chairs in the Muskoka, if we would stay with local artists, and if I heard you correctly, you pay all of the people a fair wage to the artists?
Yes, yes, absolutely. All of our programs are all local. We wouldn't be bringing anybody in from anywhere else except to demonstrate the children's theatre and to lead and train. If we engage artists to perform, they'd be local Barry artists, and if we engaged artists to create Muskoka Chair murals, we would again hire local artists.
Perfect. And you would, you would engage with the local, like Barry Art Committee and stuff to to help procure, sorry, to consign the work to local artists, like you would, you'd be involved with that? If you're successful in, you know, signing a lease or something to come to Barry?
Yes, absolutely. We're an organization that thrives on partnership, and the fact that we're having this conversation today is because of a good friend of mine, Ian Mlgash, who is the executive director of Theatre by the Bay. We worked together many, many years ago, and it's thanks to him that he connected me to councillor Nixon and the team to present the project in the first place, and we absolutely believe that working with the local community is important. So, and any suggestions and recommendations of organizations whom we should work with? We will be opening all of those doors, because they're the locals, and we're just bringing in some cool programming. So we would definitely lean on the community, for sure.
Just a final comment. If you are successful, I would imagine that council will take two of your tiki boats just for education purposes.
I would expect nonetheless.
No hot tubs, no hot tubs. Councillor Hamilton.
Just quickly, and through you, Mayor Nettle, thank you, Matt. This was a very refreshing presentation to hear after tonight's discussion. For me, I mean, this directly aligns with our strategic aim, creating a thriving community. You said the children's theatre is self-sustainable. You're leveraging local artists and musicians, so thank you to Ian. If you're listening for making the connection, thank you to Nixon for bringing this forward. I think this is fabulous. Whatever we can do to support and insist in the rollout in this, happy to do so. So look forward to hearing about next steps. You had me at Art and Water on Slide 1.
Any other questions, members of council? Seeing none. Thank you so much for the presentation, for the ideas, and we certainly look forward to getting more information. And just to thank you to councillor Nixon for moving on this and taking the lead. As that is the end of our presentations, we are now at the inquiry portion of the evening. Before we go there, councillor Morales, I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, it's not an annoyance when you bring forth the roads. It's actually your job. So I was just making a point, and I apologize if that came across the wrong way there. Inquiries from members of council. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. This is not an inquiry or an announcement, but we all received something about our finance department retaining our credit rating, and that's great work on the team, so I just wanted to pass that along. It helps in more ways than lots of people know, borrowing and moving forward, so thank you.
Mr. Miller, would you like to make a comment on deputy mayor's announcement?
Yes, so thank you, Deputy Mayor Thompson. So for those that haven't heard, I believe the announcement's coming out tomorrow. The city standard emporers is, has affirmed our, the city's double A-plus credit rating, which is, which is a very important accomplishment for the city, because as mentioned, it does keep our interest costs down, which, which helps our operating budget, and also reaffirms to investors and investors that hold some of the city's existing debt, and new investors that the city's a great place to invest. So that, that will be coming out in the morning. Thanks.
I apologize, Mr. Miller, that it's coming out tomorrow. I'm normally a day late and a dollar short.
I think that means you owe us a buck. All right. Are there any other questions? Or sorry, announcements? Councillor Kangal.
Yes, thank you. Well, it's been a good week of announcements, and while your award on the credit rating isn't as flowery as mine, it is probably quite important to all members and residents. So I had the pleasure of traveling to Fort McMurray over the weekend to be part of the National Communities in Bloom Symposium and Awards, and was happy to celebrate with our Horticultural For Person that the city of Barry received, again, a five bloom gold status and some notable mentions around the work that our Horticulture Team does, and by far, many, many departments across the city do around keeping our city clean and beautiful, thriving and, and operating. And we had the pleasure, while it was the Truth and Reconciliation Week, of spending time learning about the Dene culture and what they're doing in Alberta after the fires in Fort McMurray, around reclaiming a lot of the landscape there through some in Fort McMurray around reclaiming a lot of the landscape there through some pretty interesting and innovative ways in which they're bringing back native species and the landscape that's thriving. So I did want to say and congratulate, one, the Communications Team, on a robust report because it did make us stand out, and it is a great way to remind judges that come through about everything that we're doing, from our Operations Department to our water systems, to our natural heritage. So this crosses all elements of our strategy. This crosses all elements of our work plans and our committees. So I do hope that next July, as we go to compete internationally, that we're able to include different committee members and members of the public in how we showcase our city. But again, my compliments to Mona and the whole team in horticulture and for the work that you do, but also those in parks and forestry and recreation, because you create space that makes our city thrive, and it's valued and noted. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Congal. Counselor Corser.
I just wanted to congratulate Three Links Co-op in Ward 4 for paying off their mortgage, 40-year mortgage for their cooperative that they have for their townhouse units. It's an excellent example, a shining example of affordable housing, taking the, if you will, housing out of the commodity market. As I've mentioned a few times at the table, that I'm a huge fan of nonprofit and cooperative housing as an alternative to our housing crisis that we have now. And it was a belated celebration. They've paid off the mortgage in 2019, but because of, you know, things like global pandemics, they didn't have a real opportunity to celebrate. So they had a bouncy castle, beaver tails, carnival games. The kids were fantastic. It just really highlighted what could be a connected, close collaborative community in a cooperative place, and I think it was very exciting. And I understand that we're having further discussions about cooperatives coming later in the month, and I'm looking forward to having those. And again, if you don't know about cooperative housing, I suggest that you take a look online about it and check out Three Links Cooperative. They're a very, very good example. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Corser, and it was certainly a nice celebration to be at on Sunday. They were, I think also MP Shipley was able to join us as well. It was quite a nice celebration.
Sorry, I didn't want, sorry, I just wanted to apologize for not mentioning that you guys were there.
No, no, not at all. Not at all. Counselor Rittner.
Just a note, Mayor Noddle, that nominations are now open for the Heritage Awards. And so for members of the public, you can nominate quite easily. City website, there's nomination forms. And so everyone, if there's a person or heritage building, residential or commercial or institutional, in your area that you think deserves heritage and award, please do that nominating. Also, I would like to ask of each of the councillors, if there are buildings or people in your ward that you're aware of, because Counselor Harris, Counselor Nixon, and myself, we don't want to have all awards only in our wards. And so if there is a building or a person in your area, I would ask you to step up and nominate that person. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselor Rittner. Any other questions or any other announcements? Seeing none. Through, before I get into my written ones, last week, we had an announcement with regards to five awards that our Economic Development Team won. And so Stephanie knew we were going to put her on the spot. She decided not to show up to council. She didn't want to be put on the spot. I'm making this up. Stephanie, thank you for the work that you and your team is doing constantly. And is there something you wanted to say on behalf of your team with regards to all the awards? I just, I can picture all the bling. Like, I've got this one piece of bling on, but I can see five pieces of bling, Stephanie. I'm not sure where they are tonight, but maybe next time.
Thank you very much, Mayor Noddle. It's all plaques and stuff. Apparently, they're being shipped, so as soon as we get them, I am very happy to share with members of council. And I am grateful for the opportunity to get to acknowledge the Invest Berry team. They are an incredibly dedicated, passionate group of individuals who work tirelessly to try and support anything we can do to serve our goal, which is to help grow the employment base. But I would be remiss if I also didn't thank the partners. Everything we do, community-wise, is in collaboration. Three of the awards specifically are a result of the partnership with Georgian College, along with the County of Simcoe, our Workforce Development Board, all around supporting labour and our industry. And then our other ones, again, are around our craft beverage, and all of that is done collectively in collaboration. So, well, I'm grateful for the recognition. It is not all ours. It is shared, and quite frankly, shared amongst this table, because there are a great group of supporters, both at the DMT and EMT level, along with council, that allow us to do the work that we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that and all the work that's done, and please pass it on if you can. October 15th to 21st is Local Government Week. This week is an opportunity to promote the success and hard work that all local government professionals do to serve their communities, including transportation, road maintenance, bylaw enforcement, arts, culture, economic development, fire service, planning, and the list goes on. And I want to thank our public service for all they do, both internally, throughout our locations, but certainly facing the public. And we had the opportunity yesterday to recognize members of staff as well, who have contributed. One individual, I haven't asked his name, so I won't, 40 years of service to the city. And so Counselor Hamilton, Counselor Harvey, Counselor Congal, and myself were all able to be there and say thank you on behalf of the city to our public servants, which was a really, really nice opportunity for us. On behalf of city council, I'd like to congratulate the following staff for their designation and, sorry, designation and recognition by the Municipal Law Enforcement Officers Association, who represent municipal law enforcement officers throughout the province of Ontario. Jordan DeCary and achieving the designation of Certified Municipal Law Enforcement Officer, George Silvestri and Chris Hoffman for their 30 years of service, Elizabeth Hawk for 25 years of service, and Michael Davidson for 15 years of service. Thank you again for your service to this community. I'd also like to extend congratulations to Roger Bates on receiving the Municipal Court Managers Association Denis de Rosier Award for Excellence for his significant contributions to the Provincial Offences Act Court Services. Again, thank you for your service to the community. The city is launching the 2024 Budget Engagement Campaign on October 20th. Taxpayers are encouraged to provide feedback through the online survey on how they would like their tax dollars spent ahead of the city council's 2024 budget deliberations. To learn more and share your feedback, please visit buildingberry.ca/2024budget. I would just note at that point that taxpayers means those who own and rent. Those who rent are also paying taxes through their rent to the city. Berry Fire and Emergency Services teaming up with National Fire Protection Association for Fire Prevention Week, held October 14th. This year's focus is Cooking Safety Starts With You. People are encouraged to take simple but important actions to keep themselves and those around them safe from home fires. Further information can be found by visiting berry.ca/fpw. Berry City Council invites applications from citizens who desire to have their names considered for appointment to the Anti-Racism Task Force. The Task Force works to promote the facilitation of a stronger understanding of the needs of Berry's racialized populations and guide anti-racism actions and activities. Learn more and apply before October 30th at berry.cacommittees. And I know Esther is excited to have lots more people involved. The city of Berry was recognized with a Circle of Excellence, Five Blooms Gold Award. Sorry, I think you already actually did this for me. Thank you, Counselor Congal. A number of city services are affected on Thanksgiving Day, Monday, October 9th. Berry Transit will not be operating. No garbage, organics, recycling, or yard waste collection will be picked up. The collection will occur one day later throughout the week. The Berry City Hall and Recreation Community Centers will also be closed. For more information on affected services, visit berry.ca. There will be no meeting next week due to the Thanksgiving holiday. The Affordability Committee and General Committee meetings will be held on October 18th. We are now at the bylaws. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Noddle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills. These bills be read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed. Bill 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Hamilton, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed. Bills 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, and 110. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the bills? Seeing none, all those in favor. And they carry, Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill will be read a first, second, third, and finally passed. Bill 111.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Hamilton. The confirmation bylaw that leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill will be read a first, second, third time this day and finally passed. Bill 111. Are there any questions or comments? No recorded votes. I'm surprised. All those in favor. It carries. Do I have a move for adjournment? Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Rittner.